It is now six thirty. I am calling the meeting of the St. Louis County Council to order. Tuesday, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, six thirty P. M. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Days. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Here.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Before we begin our business, I would like for us to have a moment of silence in memory of the lives that were lost in Boulder, Colorado, as well as in the Atlanta, Georgia, area. So if you would bow your heads for a moment, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Moving to the approval of the journal. Is there a motion to approve the Journal of March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one?
Someone?
Second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The Journal of March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, sixth district.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number two, sixth district.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number three, seventh district.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Moving on to road and bridge matters, item number one, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Moving on to other communications, item number one.
Receive and file, same motion for item number two, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 No. Motion carries.
Item number five, second district.
Receive, file, and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Harder. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number six, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number seven, seventh district.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number eight, first district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number nine, third district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion for item number ten.
And that was so ordered.
Item number eleven, fifth district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number fourteen.
So ordered.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch.
I don't know if there's been any discussion. Will we be having a committee of the whole to discuss all of those different? It's quite a complicated list of items there. Is that?
I'm requesting one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a request, Madam Chair, if I may?
Councilman Tracus.
Is that a request for a committee to hold with respect to all three pieces of legislation?
It is.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. That will be the same motion through item number twenty, and that will be the order.
Item number twenty-one, third and seventh districts.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number twenty-two, first district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, the same motion for item number twenty-three, and that will be the order.
Item number twenty-four.
Receive, file, and refer to the council as a committee of the whole, and that will be the order.
Item number twenty-five, first district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Moving to add-ons, Madam Chair, item number one, first district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, fifth district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
And that will be the order.
Item number three, fifth district.
Receive, file, and refer to the Public Improvements Committee.
So ordered.
Item number four, sixth, sixth district.
Receive, file, and county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Moving on to report of special committees. The, um, this is the Edward Senior Living that we have, um, been trying to get done for quite a while. It, we will hold that on the order of business. I understand that was some problem with that. Diane, can you, uh, add some light to that?
Madam Chair, on the report, um, we need to go back and add the two conditions that need to be included uh, in this, um, matter. So we're going to revise the report, put that on for next week, and then we'll be able to move forward.
Thank you. So the holding, and that will be the order. Moving on to public forum.
Madam Chair, we have seven speakers this evening.
Thank you very much. When your name is, uh, called, listen for the clerk to ask you to begin speaking, then state your first and last name and your zip code for the record. The clerk will give you, um, uh, a heads up when your three minutes are about up. So with that, Madam Clerk, call the first speaker.
Our first speaker this evening is Elizabeth Schweppe, followed by Kurt Witzel.
My name is Elizabeth Schweppe. Uh, my zip code is six-three-zero-two-one. And tonight, I have a question for Dr. Page. My question is, Mr. Page, Saturday, the county recorded zero new COVID-positive patients. What does the daily number need to be in order for businesses to open at one hundred percent? And according to my clock, I have approximately two minutes and forty seconds left in my time, and I'm sure the county would love to hear your answer. Dr. Page, did you hear my question?
Dr. Page, are you willing to ask that?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Um, and, uh, this is a chance for the public forum, for, uh, folks from the community to, to speak and give us information. We always take it under advisement. And, um, we uh, hearing everyone's comments. Uh, thank you.
Oh, okay. So you're unwilling to answer the question. So I'm going to turn to my councilman, Fitch. You are, uh, my elected representative, just like Dr. Page is my elected representative, who, my taxpayer, my tax dollars pay his salary. I would request that you have a committee as a whole to get to the bottom of what number do we have to be at for COVID-positive results in order for our businesses that support the taxes that pay your salaries to open at one hundred percent? We are going bankrupt. We need to open. We had zero COVID-positive patients on Saturday. What are you doing? And, Dr. Page, the fact that you won't answer the question is ridiculous, because if I was a reporter with a camera, you would. And I implore anybody from the media who is on here tonight to ask this question at your next county council press conference, where you bloviate for an hour on how great of a job you're doing. We are going bankrupt, sir. Bankrupt, meaning you don't have the tax dollars to pay your salary. Good thing you have a second job. So you're still refusing to answer the question. According to my time, I have about forty seconds. To me, that means you don't have an answer, sir. You don't have a number. You don't know what you're doing. Mr. Fitch, please get to the bottom of this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Kurt Witzel, followed by Joan Hoffman.
Okay, thank you. Um, Kurt Witzel, six-three-one-two-nine. I want to start off by congratulating Senator Ritter Days on her election as Chair of the Council and Mark Harder as Vice Chair of the Council. Senator Days, you have brought order and decorum to the meetings as Chair of the Council that had been lacking last year. Thank you for your knowledge of and properly following Robert's rules of order, as was missing from the meetings in two thousand and twenty. I want to congratulate new Councilwoman Webb on her election last November and her swearing-in on January fourth, although she was illegally denied her seat by former Chair Lisa Clancy at the meeting on January fifth. I want to apologize to Councilwoman Webb on behalf of the people of St. Louis County on the manner in which you were treated by particular members of this county council upon your election. Because you were not the chosen candidate by the county executive and some Democratic council members, you were subjected to a welcome-to-the-council slap-in-the-face lawsuit instead of a hearty handshake you deserved upon your swearing-in at the council. In particular, I believe the voters of the county have to call out the actions of the former county council chair, Lisa Clancy, who sad attempts to bully, bully Councilwoman Webb by refusing to acknowledge her election by the voters of the fourth county council district and her swearing-in on January fourth was typical of Clancy's dictatorial approach towards the use towards, to use Clancy's word, an accomplished woman, particularly an African-American woman who is younger than her. Councilwoman Clancy, as your constant refrain of being a passionate advocate and progressive social warrior was proven false and hypocritical when you bullied a young African-American minority woman in a situation where it only benefited you and the illegal power grab, as your illegal action was also proven in a court of law as a violation of the Missouri Constitution. Your illegal political action cost the people of St. Louis County hundreds of thousands of tax dollars. All of this wasted money that could have gone towards saving the poor from, uh, had you only learned how to count to four. And finally, a question for county executive King Sam Page. I understand that St. Louis County, not the state of Missouri, has jurisdiction over where the state mass vaccine events are scheduled, and you have had several mass vaccination events in North St. Louis County, one now scheduled for maybe West County, but not a single, not a single planned event by the county executive in South St. Louis County. Are our lives not valuable to you? Do you not think we deserve to have an equal opportunity to receive this vaccine as others in the county? Or is this simply reverse discrimination on your part? You should be embarrassed by your actions for South County and your role as county executive, as we can only surmise you don't have time to properly do your part-time county job as you work on other illegal jobs in violation of the county charter as a doctor in local hospitals. It's time some members of the county government clean up their act, stop playing political games, and start working for the people of St. Louis County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Joan Hoffman, followed by Shannon Robinson.
Diane, before you start the clock on this one, I, I don't see a clock. Is there one available for the people to see, or can they see that?
Um, they can see it if they have the agenda pulled up.
You used to put your, uh, phone up there so we would have an idea of, you know, when they were kind of close to ending there. That would be helpful.
I can do that.
Hi. Can, can everyone hear me?
Hi.
Yes, great. Joan Hoffman, zip code six-three-zero-three-eight. I want to begin by saying thank you to Councilwoman Days and Councilwoman Webb for working with Mark Harder and Tim Fitch. We appreciate your bipartisan efforts. What I'm about to say is not directed at either, uh, either of you ladies. Um, I have complete and total faith in you that you will do the right thing at the right time. So the rest of this, what I have to say is for Sam Page and Lisa Clancy. Democrats call themselves pro-choice, but what does that mean? It means that it's my choice to go to a restaurant. It's my choice to decide whether or not my kids play sports. My choice to work out without wearing a face mask. Uh, my choice to decide whether or not to get a vaccine. It should have been my choice to accompany my sick pet into the vet hospital where he might not have lasted the evening. Fortunately, he did survive, but that was really horrible to send him in there alone. I would have respected any safety protocols they gave me, but he needed me there. And maybe to some people, that's just an animal, but animals have rights, and they need their owners with them. Um, it is my choice to decide what's best for my health, not to be told what's best for my health by someone who has never met me and knows nothing about my medical background. Sam Page and Lisa Clancy, your actions indicate that you don't care about what choice really is, and I am asking you to start caring. If you're going to be Democrats and call yourselves pro-choice, you need to start caring. I personally will not rest until my rights are restored. Sam Page, if you're going to preach to us about science, well, science does say that my face is part of my body. I am asking you now, figure it out, or you're going to have to say goodbye to your job. My body, my choice. And thank you to everyone on the council who understands that and respects that, and to those who are doing the right thing. Have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Shannon Robinson, followed by Suzanne Burley.
Shannon Robinson, six-three-zero-two-five. March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, at six o'clock P. M., St. Louis's stay-at-home order took effect at the direction of Sam Page. According to the Post on March twenty-second, the order will last thirty days, and if violated, carries a potential misdemeanor charge. It is March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, three hundred and sixty-five days later, and the orders have lasted far past thirty days, and still each one carries a misdemeanor charge based on illegal laws made by a local health department. Here is some data taken today from our local health sites. Forty-five total positive cases in the entire county, one total death, twenty-five total COVID admissions, according to the pandemic task force. Um, but those twenty-five admissions aren't broken up into which hospitals in which of the thirteen counties and the two states and the twenty-four hospitals that the task force pulls information from. Dr. Garza doesn't break that up for us. If we average out the admissions as a little more than one person per hospital that was admitted today, the numbers have been low like this for weeks, as I have been following them. I suggest everyone here follows them as well, so you know what you really are supporting and why when it comes to the restrictions a year later. Why do we still have restrictions? Can you honestly answer that? St. Charles County has a lower death per one hundred thousand than we do, and they didn't have nearly the restriction that we've had. We have two hundred and fifty pages. They had one paragraph. When interviewed about this scientific fact, Dr. Khan said, "We shouldn't use data to come to the conclusion that restrictions don't work." What is it that we should use if not data and science? My second thought, Sam Page was quoted saying this on March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, about spending and COVID. This means departments will not be filling vacant positions, will be, will be deferring capital projects and purchases, and will not be taking other appropriate steps to cut costs. The last thing I have seen is Sam Page taking steps to cut costs during the last year. We have seen a pay-to-play job for Rochelle Gray, hiring four lobbyists to make sure citizens' freedoms are continued to be stripped, and the seven hundred and fifty thousand plus that has been spent on lawsuits in just the past three months. And now we have Mr. Tracus wanting to pass a bill that gives Sam Page a blank check to write to outside law firms? Is it in order to keep him in control and power? It is hard to stop a man with an unlimited amount of funds to support himself in the court system against small businesses, churches, and citizens. I asked the council, "What is the point of checks and balances on the council if you can't check exactly how he spends the bank checks?" I hope you vote no on Tracus' outside legal counsel blank check bill. And lastly, after a year, it's time to start having meetings in person. I saw many leaders at a rally the other night. If the dad is a safe activity, then getting together to do the county's businesses can be safe, and it should be a priority. Open meetings need to start immediately, and using the COVID excuse has expired. Citizens are frustrated, and their cooperation has also expired. It's time to get back to work at one hundred percent capacity and get our kids back to a sense of the normal life they deserve and desperately need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Suzanne Burley, followed by Elizabeth Cohen.
Hello, this is Suzanne Burley, six-three-one-two-three. Can you hear me?
You can, please proceed.
All right, thank you. Um, first, I'm going to start with, um, just a little something that happened to me this week. Um, I actually got hurt, and, um, I got a, a pinched nerve. And, um, of course, I called my doctor, and my primary recommended three doctors, and as every other person probably does, I started looking up the doctors to see which one would be a good fit for me. And, um, they were all three very good choices, but there was one that I really liked, and, um, I planned on scheduling with him to go see him. Um, upon a little bit further investigation, I noticed that his association was with Western anesthesiology. And at that point, my mind was made up. It did not matter that I really preferred that doctor. Um, he's probably a great doctor, but the affiliation, um, with Western anesthesiologists, I, I just, there was no way I was going to schedule my appointment with that person. And, and I'm just one person, and I know that seems really small. And, um, you know, it, it's a very large business, and I'm sure me not going there will not have any impact. But I can only hope that others start to follow suit. Um, because we should not be giving our business to those that are not supporting our businesses being open. My second thought is for Mr. Tracus. You are my councilperson, and I am just extremely confused um, with the back and forth that I'm seeing. I was very happy, um, several months ago, when you were voting um, to support the oversight that everyone has been asking for, um, putting the council in charge of voting for decisions that Sam Page is making. But then today, when I learned that you were putting forward a bill that would basically allow him a blank check, it confused me. It's, it's either or, and I'm not getting that answer from you. I can't figure out the back and forth flip-flop. And thirdly, uh, Lisa Clancy, I noticed that you had on Twitter about a St. Louis youth county council. Um, it was intriguing. I have a high schooler. Um, I was, I was very interested in something like that for her. But unfortunately, with the negativity that you're bringing to yourself with the bad decisions, I would question allowing my teenager to participate in something that I would be afraid that you would be leading. So that's all of my thoughts this week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Cohen, followed by Leslie Fogarty.
Hi. Elizabeth Cohen, six-three-zero-zero-five. Um, so I've, I've called in here several weeks in a row, and, um, I listen now pretty much every week. And I was at a loss of what to talk about tonight. Um, and this, this, what I'm going to say, it sounds a little extreme, right? Um, but I looked up a dictator. And a dictator is defined as a political leader who possesses absolute power. Um, dictators, including Adolf Hitler, Joseph Stalin, Napoleon, and Kim Jong-un, reveal what happens when one person is given unchecked power. And yeah, that sounds extreme, right? Because we're in St. Louis County. Um, but you know what else sounds extreme is if a year ago we had been told that it, that in March of two thousand and twenty-one, Sam Page would still be the only one making decisions for this county with no oversight. That is extreme. And I'm wondering how much longer this council is going to stand by and allow it. Oversight needs to be restored. It's been a year since our fifteen days or thirty days or whatever it was to slow the spread, and we slowed the spread. Our hospitals are no longer overwhelmed with COVID cases. Our ICUs are no longer full of COVID cases. The number of COVID cases are at summer levels. Why have the added restrictions put in place in November not been removed? When will CDC guidelines of only requiring three feet of social distancing in schools instead of six be added to the St. Louis County health guidelines? Why are students, kids still wearing masks when playing sports inside? Why are we still wearing masks when we work out, even though we're more than six feet apart from any other person when we do it? Why do we still have curfews at restaurants, even as though staying past midnight affects the spread of COVID? Sam Page, in the words of Councilman Tracus, "You are a fool. Keeping this county locked down instead of following the science that has shown us how to live with this virus does not make you a good leader or a good doctor. You are not saving lives." And I, I'll echo the previous callers that these, these meetings need to be in person again. Um, this method of calling in, I've watched it week after week, silence the voices of the people of St. Louis County with technical difficulties. So I'd like to, I have seen meetings in person again. Um, it's being done in many formats and can be done safely. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Leslie Fogarty.
Hi. Well, I want to echo everyone's frustration with the lockdown. I want to bring up another issue. I am sick of seeing cars with no plates, expired plates, or very expired temp tags, some years old. Cars need to be impounded until they are legal. Who is responsible if someone is killed by driving around a car that is not properly licensed and ninety-nine percent most likely not insured? How much tax revenue is being lost to those not complying with the law to pay taxes on their vehicles? While going out on Friday evening, I noticed a temp tag expiration of ten-twenty, four-twenty, two cars with no plates, and two window temp tags that couldn't be read due to the window tint being so dark. This was all observed one mile from my house, and those are only the ones that I noticed. Excessive speeding and reckless driving is also out of control. Gunfire in the Ferguson area is almost a nightly occurrence. COVID is no excuse to stop holding court and penalizing those who are not complying with the law. COVID hasn't stopped those who don't want to follow the laws, so why is it, how has it stopped giving, stopped our county from enforcing the laws and holding court? I just started attending these meetings about a month ago. Apparently, many members of this committee only appear about power instead of focusing on actual matters that affect everyday, law-abiding, tax-paying citizens. The only person who I've even heard mention their constituents is Councilwoman Webb. I know she is new to the committee, and I hope she retains that focus. And Ms. Days, I appreciate her keeping her composure during the recent debacle. I hear many concerns every week, some over and over again, and absolutely crickets from this board, which actually just happened with the first caller. What are you doing about these concerns? I think it is time for some new leadership in the county. I hope citizens of St. Louis County look around and see how lockdowns and lack of law enforcement and common sense has negatively impacted the county. We are becoming an extension of St. Louis City that gets mentioned in the same breath on the news in regard to crime and violence with big cities such as Chicago, LA, Baltimore, New York. That is not a badge of honor. It is a wonder that people are leaving this county for other areas that have better leadership. It is ultimately up to the people who you work for to make that leadership change. And I urge everyone to consider running against or help other candidates' campaigns to get our county moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's all the speakers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Normally, when we have a public comment, we want to make sure that we hear as much from you as we possibly can, which most times we don't allow an exchange. The reason that we take your zip code is so that your county councilperson can get in touch with you if there was follow-up needed or if there are additional comments that you want to make. So let's utilize that and make sure that those people who want to have a comment are heard in their entirety. So I thank you all for your time and for your willingness to come forward and have your say in terms of county government and how we are working. So with that, we'll go to a report of the county executive.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Over the next several weeks, we expect to see our vaccine allotments increase substantially. And that's great news for those who are waiting for an appointment. To prepare for that vaccine surge, we're seeking more volunteers to help us. I'm calling on primary care physicians and other medical providers in St. Louis County to consider becoming a vaccinator. As a patient's most trusted source of information on vaccines, you play a critical role in helping build confidence and getting the COVID-19 vaccination distributed widely throughout the county. It will take all of us, the Department of Health, pharmacies, hospitals, and physicians working together to meet the demand for the vaccine. Those relationships are already in place. We just need to build on them. Providers who want to participate as a vaccination site can enroll through Show Me Vax, a system set up by the state of Missouri. You can access that site through stlcorona.com/vaccinators. The Department of Public Health is aiming for a record 15,000 vaccinations a week. And we are putting on more events than ever to meet the demand for the COVID-19 vaccines in our community. These efforts involve multiple strategies. They include the vaccination event for St. Louis County educators going on now and continuing tomorrow at St. Louis County's Community College's Forcent Valley Campus and the large-scale vaccination events like the one Friday and Saturday at Queenie Park. We also continue our partnerships with fire districts throughout the county, including Afton and Melville. Combined, they are averaging about 2,000 shots per week in these two South County locations. Meanwhile, the Department of Public Health is actively looking for a semi-permanent, large-scale vaccination site in South St. Louis County. We are also actively working with several of our community partners to get our homebound residents and those living in senior group homes the vaccine. The mix of outreach is critical and it comes with extraordinary effort and coordination. Thank you to the hundreds of volunteers who have been dedicating their time and skills to the cause. We are grateful for your service to our community. With the number of vaccines delivered to our community expected to dramatically increase over the next several weeks, we'll be holding more large-scale vaccination events and we'll need more volunteers. There are opportunities for those with or without a medical background as we work to get those with appointments through the vaccination sites safely and efficiently. If you're interested in volunteering, visit stlcorona.com/volunteer. We will soon receive more federal funds to help us continue our response to the pandemic and these funds will help us complete the vaccination process. It will help us continue to assist struggling families with basic needs and they will help us get our economy not only fully restored, but more robust than ever. I look forward to meeting with Chief Councilmember to discuss this once-in-a-generation opportunity for St. Louis County to invest in the health and safety of our residents and businesses and build back an even better community hit hard by this pandemic. We know that we cannot have a healthy economy without healthy residents and we cannot let up on our year-long effort to protect ourselves and our loved ones. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to introduction of bills.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, excuse me. I was wondering if I could ask Councilman Harder.
County Executive. I was wondering if I could ask a question of the county executive.
Yes, you may. You have the floor.
Yeah, Mr. County Executive, what is the number that the county needs to hit before we open up to 100%?
Well, the next stage, according to our Health Department experts, is where I turn to. You know by now, Councilman Harder, that these aren't decisions that I make. They're decisions that are made by the public health experts in our county health department, the epidemiologists, and our partners in the health systems and the pandemic task force, and the medical research that comes from the CDC, and we follow their guidance as well. But when they make a recommendation, I support it. And the most recent communication from them, prior to a slight increase in our vaccination over the past month, has been that they would like to see cases per day and averaging on a seven-day average below 100. And I'm sure you look at stlcorona.com like I do and you watch that seven-day average. It pops up every day. It's around 150 right now. It's not going in the right direction. It's been pretty steady between 130 and 150. But St. Louis and the St. Louis area, we've been tremendously disadvantaged by the vaccine supply and the rollout, which disadvantaged St. Louis County and the eligible residents that we have, not just the healthcare workers and those in our nursing facilities, but those over 65 and now all the essential workers, and we have hundreds of thousands of people waiting to get vaccinated. So I'll look to the public health experts and the health researchers in our pandemic task force and I'll continue to follow their guidance. And that target may change as we get more people vaccinated. But we've been so terribly disadvantaged by vaccine access and the vaccine supply in our community. And we've read over and over about our residents traveling hundreds of miles for hours to get a vaccine in other parts of the state. And in fact, and they'll meet people from St. Louis. And I've heard these stories now of folks standing in line in a rural vaccination center and most of the people in line are from St. Louis. So we know we have a problem and we know we have to get people vaccinated and we know we have to get people vaccinated to get us back to normal. And we're working quickly with all the partners and everyone in the community who's serious about helping us get people vaccinated. We're working very closely with them. And I hope that number of cases per day, that projection of what we'll need to do to change our public health orders, according to our health experts and our epidemiologists and the pandemic task force, I hope that number will change. But we have to get people vaccinated and our number-one focus of the county health department, as you know, Councilman Harder, is to get as many people vaccinated as soon as possible. And we'll continue to watch all this data. We'll continue to follow the advice of our public health experts.
So your number is 100 additional cases on average per day? Is that the number?
Well, Councilman Harder, I'll say it again. I thought I was pretty clear. There is no absolute number. My decision is based on my support for the public health experts. We follow their recommendations, the epidemiologists, all the people in the Department of Public Health that are watching these data, watching these trends lines, are fighting to get vaccine here in St. Louis County. We're watching their recommendations. We're watching the CDC guidelines as they change, as they did last week for schools. We watch their guidance and we listen to the pandemic task force. The most recent communication from them was from our public health experts, was they would like to see the daily case rate below 100, which has been widely published in the media. But again, we'll turn to them for the answer to that question. This isn't my decision. My decision has always been to support the public health experts and our medical community and the CDC guidance. And my decision will continue to be to support their recommendations. But most recently, as you know, there's not one piece of information that we follow. There are many. But that one piece of information that we'd like to see regarding the number of cases, and I know you watch stlcorona.com as I do every day, and I know you've seen that number slowly tick up a little bit from 128 or 124, which was a low point a few weeks ago. We'd like to see it down to 100. But most importantly, we need to get everyone in our community vaccinated. And that's why it's all hands on deck in St. Louis County. Everyone in the Health Department, everyone in my office, all of our community partners are getting ready for an appropriate influx of vaccines in St. Louis County so we can get everyone vaccinated.
But you realize that not everyone will be vaccinated. You realize that?
That's right. And we understand how to get to herd immunity. And we understand not everyone will be vaccinated. We understand that there's a lot of people that absolutely refuse to take the vaccine and there's a lot of vaccine hesitancy. And we hope we can close that gap with education. We're working very hard, especially among our North County residents, to try and get people to accept the vaccine. But we know not everyone will take it. But we'll work very hard to do that. I think that's important. And we're going to get people vaccinated and we'll follow the recommendations of the Public Health Department and our medical experts. And when they tell us that they're comfortable with the vaccination rate in our community and the number of cases in the community, then they'll make recommendations on our public health protocols and safety measures and I'll follow their advice.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your question.
Anyone else? Moving on to introduction of bills.
Proceeding with introduction, Madam Chair. Bill number 78, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $17,969 from the Curators of the University of Missouri on behalf of the University of Missouri-St. Louis, appropriating the same for support of the Department of Public Health's First Responders Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act for Missouri Project and authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Health to execute necessary documents. Bill number 79, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance amending ordinance number 28,0018 pertaining to a grant from the Federal Bureau of Investigation to support cost of expansion of leased space for the police department. Bill number 80, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, an ordinance amending ordinance number 27,110 pertaining to a contract with H.R. Green Incorporated for professional engineering services related to the Bayless Avenue Resurfacing Project, the Bayless Road Resurfacing Project, and the Deelman Road ARS Infrastructure Project and authorizing the Director of Transportation to execute necessary documents for revision of work activity schedules, AR-1693, 1683, and 1554. Bill number 81, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance amending Title 12, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, traffic code by deleting one provision from Schedule 9 and by enacting and adding one new provision to Schedule 9. Bill number 82, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance providing for certain terms and conditions relating to an application for Federal Recreational Trails Program, RTP funding to support the Grants Trail-Doman Bridge Replacement Project and authorizing the county executive and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute grant documents and other necessary project documents. Bill number 83, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Monsanto Company for lease of property at Spirit of St. Louis Airport and authorizing termination of the lease authorized by ordinance number 26,873. Bill number 84, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance authorizing the county counselor to execute a contract with Lewis Rice LLC to provide legal services to St. Louis County. Bill number 85, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance authorizing the county counselor to execute a contract with Littler Mendelson PC to provide legal services to St. Louis County. Bill number 86, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance authorizing the county counselor to execute a contract with Helper Broom LLC to provide legal services to St. Louis County. Bill number 87, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance authorizing the county counselor to execute a contract with outside counsel to provide legal services to St. Louis County in disciplinary matters of the Department of Police. Bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance amending Chapter 714, Title 7, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Commission on Human Relations by repealing and reenacting Sections 714.010, 714.020, and 714.030. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Moving on to perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold. Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Thank you. I apologize. Move to hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 266.
Bill 266 is held.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 267.
Bill 267 is held.
Bill number 69, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Dunaway.
Yes, before taking action on this item, I would like to go back to the introduction of bills. Bill number 80 should have been read as Clancy for Dunaway. Can we make that correction, please?
Madam Clerk, can you make that adjustment?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Can I say, thank you.
Thank you. And with that also, then, I move to perfect Bill number 69.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 69 is perfected.
Bill number 70, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Okay, you're coming in and out. Is there a second on Bill number 70? Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 70 is perfected.
Bill number 71, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 71.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 71 is perfected.
Bill number 72, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 72.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill number 72 is perfected.
Bill number 73, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
I move to perfect Bill number 73.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill number 73 is perfected.
Bill number 74, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
I move to perfect Bill number 74.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 74 is perfected.
Bill number 75, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold Bill number 75.
Bill number 75 is held.
Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Daze and Webb. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Yes, ma'am. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Daze and Webb, an ordinance amending Chapter 107, Title 1, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, purchasing by repealing and reenacting Sections 107.020 and 107.146, amending Chapter 202, Title 2, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, personnel classified service by repealing and reenacting Section 202.270, amending Chapter 714, Title 7, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Commission on Human Relations by repealing and reenacting Sections 714.030, amending Chapter 717, Title 7, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Fair Housing Code by repealing and reenacting Sections 717.010. by repealing and reenacting Sections Seven One Seven Point Oh One Oh, Seven One Seven Point Oh Two Oh, Seven One Seven Point Oh Four Oh, Seven One Seven Point Oh Five Oh, and Seven One Seven Point Oh Five Six, amending Chapter Seven Eighteen Title Seven, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances nineteen seventy-four as amended, the Public Accommodations Code by repealing and reenacting Sections Seven One Eight Point Oh One Oh and Seven One Eight Point Oh Two Oh, amending Chapter Seven Twenty Two Title Seven, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances nineteen seventy-four as amended, Human Relations Related Petty Offenses Code by repealing and reenacting Sections Seven Two Two Point Oh Three Oh, Seven Two Two Point Oh Four Oh, and Seven Two Two Point Oh Five Oh, amending Chapter Eleven Eleven Title Eleven, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances nineteen seventy-four as amended, Sewer Lateral Repair Program by repealing and reenacting Sections Eleven Eleven Point Oh Two Oh and Eleven Eleven Point Oh Seven Oh, and amending Chapter Eleven Twelve Title Twelve, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances nineteen seventy-four as amended, Water Service Line Repair Program by repealing and reenacting Sections Eleven Twelve Point Oh Two Oh and Eleven Twelve Point Oh Seven Oh, all pertaining to nondiscrimination provisions pertaining to hairstyle, protective hair, and natural and cultural hair texture and style.
I move for the adoption of substitute number one for Bill number seventy-six, is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
All in favor, please say aye.
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Discussion, Councilman Trachis.
Thank you, well, I certainly understand and admire the idea behind the legislation, it is my position that adequate protections for what you're trying to accomplish here already exist in local ordinance, state, and federal law, in addition, having read the original bill as well as the substitute, I believe that the definitions are too broad and vague, and so for those reasons, Madam Chair, I will not be able to support this bill, thank you.
Thank you, any other further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, was that just Councilman Trachis that voted no?
No, I think that was also Councilman Harder.
Okay, do they both want that recorded?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, so the substitute is adopted, I move for perfection of substitute Bill Number One, substitute number one for Bill number seventy-six, is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries. Bill number seven, substitute Bill, substitute number one for Bill number seventy-six is perfected.
Bill number seventy-seven, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read substitute.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill number seventy-seven, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in St. Louis County on the date of the next countywide election, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of St. Louis County a proposition to amend Section Five Point Oh Three Oh Point One of the St. Louis County Charter to provide for gender-neutral language and Section Eleven Point One One Oh of the St. Louis County Charter pertaining to nondiscrimination in employment and compensation of county employees.
This substitute bill corrects the clerical error, there were some things inadvertently left out of the original version of this bill, I would like to adopt the substitute tonight, and then I do plan to hold the adopted bill, so with that, I move to adopt substitute Bill Number One for Bill number seventy-seven.
Is there a second?
Is there a second, Webb?
All in favor, please say aye.
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Discussion, Councilman Trachis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, as with this bill, it is my position that, and again, I understand what Councilwoman Clancy is trying to accomplish, but with respect to the amendment of Article Eleven of the Charter, it is my position that adequate protections already exist within local ordinance and state and federal law, moreover, the twenty-twenty Supreme Court decision in Bostock versus Clayton County clearly addresses the issue that Councilwoman Clancy seeks to accomplish in this, so at the best, this is duplicative and redundant, and the Bostock case is spot on on this, so for those reasons, Madam Chair, I will be opposing this legislation, thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? Saying none, all in favor of adoption of substitute number one for Bill number seventy-seven, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no.
No. No.
Madam Chair, can I clarify that that was Councilman Trachis and Councilman Harder?
That is correct.
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear anything else.
Thank you.
Motion carries, the substitute is adopted.
And with that, I would like to hold substitute Bill Number One for Bill number seventy-seven.
Substitute Bill Number One for, Bill Number Seventy-Seven is held, moving on to final passage.
Bill number three twenty, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number three twenty.
Bill number three twenty is held.
Bill number fourteen, introduced by Councilmembers Trachis, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number fourteen, please.
Bill number fourteen is held.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Seventy-Six, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Seventy-Six.
The bill is held.
Bill number two twenty, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Please hold Bill number two twenty.
Bill number two twenty is held.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Forty-Nine, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Forty-Nine.
Is there a second? There a second?
Second, Webb.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Forty-Nine, there are six ayes and one absent.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Forty-Nine is finally passed.
Bill number fifty-one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Read the substitute.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Fifty-One, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance amending Chapter One Oh Four Offices and Officers Title One, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances nineteen seventy-four as amended, by repealing and reenacting Sections One Oh Four Point One Hundred and One Oh Four Point Five Three Oh, amending Chapter Two Oh One Personnel General by repealing and reenacting Sections Two Oh One Point Oh Six Oh, Two Oh One Point Oh Seven Oh, Two Oh One Point Oh Eight Oh, and Two Oh One Point Oh Nine Oh, and amending Chapter Two Oh Two Title Two, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances nineteen seventy-four as amended, personnel classified service by repealing and reenacting Sections Two Oh Two Point Three Six Oh, Two Oh Two Point Three Six Five, and Two Oh Two Point Three Six Six pertaining to maximum compensation of certain employees in calendar year two, twenty twenty-one, and various pay range structures.
Yeah, so this substitute bill, I've been working with Councilman Fitch over the past week or so to address some concerns that he had primarily around non-merit employees, this bill has been on our agenda for a while now, we had a hearing to bring everyone who is from the public, who's been watching up to speed on this, this is the bill that implements the structure that is required for us to give pay raises to many of our employees, and this raise was approved during our twenty twenty-one budget cycle late last year, so again, this provides the structure needed to actually make those raises happen, it does not in and of itself actually provide their raises, so with that, I would like to move to adopt substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Fifty-One.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Fifty-One is adopted.
And then I move to take up substitute Bill Number One for Bill Fifty-One on the final passage order of business.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then pursuant to, or I move for rule for final passage of substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Fifty-One. Actually, I don't think that's necessary, Chris, because did we not have unanimous consent?
We did, yes.
We did, so we don't need to suspend the rules.
No, we don't need to suspend the rules, we did have a jury.
Yeah, so I move for final passage of substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Fifty-One.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
One second, Genevieve.
Yes, ma'am, you don't have unanimous consent because you don't have all seven council members, so you would need to adopt a motion to suspend the rules.
That is correct, thank you for that catch, that is correct.
So then I will, I will go back, if I am allowed to, pursuant to Rule Number Nineteen, Chris, do you have a slide? I move to suspend Rule Number Nine in order to take up substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Fifty-One on the final passage order of business.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
And finally, I move for final passage of substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Fifty-One.
There a second? Discussion.
Discussion.
Madam Chair, who made the second?
That was Councilman Fitch.
Thank you.
Councilman Harder, I believe you had discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm reluctantly willing to support this bill, but I just want to say that to those listening, you know, if we don't get our revenue back in line above COVID limits, we won't be able to afford this ever again, and these numbers will, you know, we have told that we are on the downward slide here, and we're either to make the numbers work in the future, and to afford this, even if we don't give any more raises, we still will be at a six percent increase for many, that, you know, we will have to lay people off, we will have to do other drastic measures to just to balance the budget in any close farm going forward, so I'm very concerned, and I think county employees deserve a raise, they haven't gotten a raise in a long time, but they also have to understand that the shape and the size of county government will have to change in the next couple of years to reflect this increase, and we were going to do it anyway, this just drives us further and faster to that decision going forward, and the numbers don't lie, and we've been told about it for many years, and we're closer to that precipice now than we've ever been, so I just want to let everybody know that that is my concern, but I also am torn because there are many good people in county government that haven't gotten raises in many years, and that they need to have something for now, but this isn't, this is not sustainable going forward, that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you, any further comments? Councilman Harder, I share your concerns, that does mean that this council is going to have to do some deep dive into the departments as we move forward with the next year's budget, and so that is going to be incumbent upon us to make the necessary changes that we have to make in order for these raises to be sustainable, so I do appreciate your comments, any further discussions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Regrettably, aye.
Madam Chair, on substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Fifty-One, there are six ayes and one absent.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Fifty-One is finally passed.
Bill Number Sixty-Seven, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Sixty-Seven.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number Sixty-Seven, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number Sixty-Seven is finally passed.
Bill Number Sixty-Eight, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Sixty-Eight.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number Sixty-Eight, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number Sixty-Eight is finally passed, moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have three resolutions this evening, Resolution Number One, introduced by Councilmembers Days, Webb, and Clancy.
Please read the resolution.
Resolution, whereas Myrtle Hilliard Davis graduated from Homer G. Phillips Nursing School in nineteen fifty-five, and whereas Myrtle served as Deputy Director of the St. Louis Comprehensive Health Center, working alongside CEO Morris Henderson, and whereas, following Mr. Henderson's death, Myrtle served as the CEO of St. Louis Comprehensive Health Center, and whereas, under Myrtle's leadership, St. Louis Comprehensive Health Center, the center, provided accessible healthcare to the St. Louis community, particularly African-Americans, as well as nursing training programs, and whereas, despite fierce political opposition, Myrtle's determination, drive, and dedication allowed the center to thrive and grow, and whereas, Myrtle made it her life's mission to strengthen St. Louis, particularly the African-American community, through healthcare access, education, and job opportunities, and whereas, Myrtle was a ceaseless advocate for the center and her community, raising funds through grants and creative outside methods in order to fulfill her mission, and whereas, Myrtle received numerous awards and honors for her work, including a distinguished achievement award from the World Who's Who of Women, a special leadership award from the YWCA of Metro-St. Louis, the Declaration of Myrtle Hilliard Davis Day, a certificate of appreciation from the Missouri Senate, as well as being celebrated by the National Council of Negro Women and Frito-Lay with a salute. as well as being celebrated by the National Council of Negro Women and Frito Lay with a salute Black Women Who Make It Happen Award. And whereas, although she passed away in two thousand and seven, Myrtle's work continues to serve the St. Louis community and is foundational to the success of the newly renamed CARE STL Health Centers. And whereas, it is appropriate for the county council and all St. Louis County residents to pause and recognize a woman so devoted to our community and the well-being, health, and progress of the St. Louis region. And whereas, in honor of Women's History Month, celebrated every year throughout the month of March, it is further appropriate for the county council to recognize such an extraordinary extraordinary woman and trailblazer in her profession. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council in conjunction with Women's History Month remembers and honors Myrtle Hilliard Davis, a role model and inspiration to all women. Section two, the administrative director shall send certified copies of this resolution to Ms. Myrtle Hilliard Davis's family and to the Chief Executive Officer of CARE STL Health as permanent tokens of the council's sincere appreciation of a life well lived.
Thank you very much, Kevin. I move for adoption of resolution number one. Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are six ayes and one absent.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Continuing with resolutions, Madam Chair. Resolution number two introduced by Councilmembers Daze, Clancy for Dunaway, Fitch, Webb, Clancy, Tracus, and Harder.
Kevin, I want you to read a part of this. I have not selected, but it is a very lengthy resolution. I don't know if we necessarily need to read all of it, but could you read the first page? And then go back to the whereas's at the end, the last last page.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Resolution, whereas antisemitism, including harassment on the basis of actual or perceived Jewish origin, ancestry, ethnicity, identity, affiliation, or faith remains a persistent, pervasive, and disturbing problem in American society. And whereas, Jews continue to be a targeted minority in the United States and are consistently the most likely of all religious groups to be victimized by incidents of hate, and such incidents are increasing at an alarming rate. And whereas, the deadliest attack against the American Jewish community took place on October twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen at the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, killing eleven worshippers and injuring several more. And whereas, nearly sixty percent of religious-based crimes in the United States were committed against Jews, according to the two thousand and nineteen FBI hate crime report, even though Jews represent only two percent of the United States' total population. And whereas, elected officials and government institutions have a responsibility to protect people from acts of hate and bigotry, including antisemitism, and must be given the tools to do so. And whereas, valid monitoring, informed analysis and investigation, and effective policymaking all benefit from accurate and uniform definitions. And whereas, the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance, IHRA, by consensus vote of its member states, adopted a working definition of antisemitism, IHRA Working Definition, in May two thousand and sixteen, which has become the internationally recognized authoritative definition for use by governments and international, excuse me, and international and organizations. And whereas, the IHRA Working Definition has proven to be an essential tool used to determine contemporary manifestations of antisemitism. And whereas, in the United States, the IHRA Working Definition is utilized by various government and law enforcement agencies in monitoring, training, and education, including the United States Department of State and the United States Department of Education. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council supports the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance Working Definition of Antisemitism, including the eleven contemporary examples. Section two, the administrative director shall deliver certified copies of this resolution to the Chair of the St. Louis County Human Relations Commission and the Regional Director of the Anti-Defamation League in St. Louis.
I move for the adoption of resolution number two. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Nope.
Thank you. And before the roll is called, I want to thank all of my colleagues for supporting this. I think this is very important, and so I just want to again express my thanks to you for the support. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number two, there are six ayes and one absent.
Resolution number two is adopted.
Moving on to resolution number three this evening. Resolution number three introduced by Councilmember Daze.
Please read the resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas over thirty-one hundred students are enrolled in the Normandy Schools Collaborative, the Collaborative, located in St. Louis County. And whereas, the Collaborative is a provisionally accredited district and is governed by a joint executive governing board, the JEGB, with members appointed by the State Board of Education. And whereas, multiple news media outlets have recently reported that the current superintendent of the Collaborative, hired by the JEGB in April two thousand and twenty, does not hold the certification required by the Missouri Department of Education for the position. And whereas, it will likely be impossible for the Collaborative to achieve full accreditation without a properly certified superintendent. And whereas, during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, virtual learning has adversely impacted minority students, including those who attend the Collaborative. And whereas, highly qualified leadership of the Collaborative is essential to raising student test scores and ensuring accountability to the taxpayers. And whereas, the county council supports providing each and every child in St. Louis County with a quality education. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council expresses its support for the students, families, and taxpayers of the Normandy Schools Collaborative, and strongly urges the Joint Executive Governing Board to engage a highly qualified, fully credentialed superintendent to lead the Collaborative. Section two, the administrative director shall send certified copies of this resolution to the President, Officers, and Members of the Joint Executive Governing Board for the Normandy Collaborative Schools, the Missouri Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the President, Officers, and Members of the Missouri State Board of Education.
I move for adoption of resolution number three. Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, discussion? Councilwoman?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to be a co-sponsor of this resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Tracus.
Yes, if you don't mind, I would also like to co-sponsor the bill.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Councilman Fitch?
Thank you, ma'am, if you wouldn't mind adding me as well.
Thank you. Councilman Harder?
Add me as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the roll. Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam Chair. Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number three, there are six ayes and one absent.
Thank you. Motion carries. Resolution number three is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business.
Item number one.
Please hold on the order of business.
Item number two.
Please hold on the order of business.
And item number three.
Please hold on the order of business.
Moving on to new business this evening, Madam Chair, we have three prepared orders.
Order number one?
Yes, order number one, I'm sorry, in the matter of communications from Jennifer Keating, Acting Director of Procurement, and Todd A. Martin, Director of Administration, requesting authorization to dispose of certain personal property.
I move for adoption of order number one.
Is there a second?
Second web.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Order number one is adopted.
Order number two, in the matter of the requests of the records manager for permission to destroy certain books, papers, and records of various county departments and offices.
I move for adoption of order number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second web.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Order number two is adopted.
And order number three, in the matter of approval of a fourth amendment to a contract with Shands, Albert, Gianoculus, and Giljam LLP.
I move for adoption of order number three.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Order number three is adopted. Right. Any other business to come before the council this evening? I hope you all had a good spring break. It was very short. We're back in the business now. Councilwoman Clancy.
Yes, just a couple announcements. As folks may or may not be aware, it is a property reassessment year. The assessor's office, I think, has reached out to each of us to partner on town halls. And I think the first town hall will be, I will be hosting this Monday, March twenty-ninth, along with Assessor Jake Zimmerman. And that will be at six PM. It will be virtual. If you would like information to attend, it is open to anyone. Please reach out to my office. Additionally, Councilwoman Dunaway wanted me to share that she is also having a town hall with Assessor Zimmerman next Wednesday, the thirty-first, at six PM, and you can reach out to her office for details on that.
All right. Anything else?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder.
To piggyback on that, the seventh district will be having a similar town hall meeting with Assessor Zimmerman on April twelfth, it's a Monday. I believe it's going to be about six o'clock on that day, and it will be virtual as well. So I hope everybody can attend, that can attend.
Thank you. Any further announcements?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Webb?
I do believe, as my peers have said, all of us are having an actual town hall with the assessor. Is there some way that we can put all of those dates on the county website so people can have all the dates for all of the different town halls to accommodate their schedules best?
I think we can arrange that. Diane, can you handle that?
Madam Chair, I believe they are up on the website. They are being put on the website, but I will double check. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further announcements, discussions?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Thank you very much. Motion carries. Have a good evening.